And shut up. Oh, did I say that aloud? I'm sorry. We will get this meeting rolling. Just a minute, Mr. Brown, I'll get to you. If we could start, if you could please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Brown, I hear you have something you'd like to share with us. If someone could get him a microphone. Yes, we have runners for microphones tonight. We're back to our old style.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Elliot Brown, Precinct 7. I move that this body express its continued appreciation for our Burlington Police Department.
We can do that. Thank you, Chief, and all those who work with you. One other, I have an announcement here. There is a blue Infiniti G35, mask plates 185, R47. You're blocking a fire hydrant, so if you could please move it. We'd hate for a tow truck to show up. I know it's not mine, so it's all right. All right, so let's get back to where we ended. I believe the last one we got through was 7... 7:13? Did we get 7:14 done? 7:13 is done. All right, so we'll start with 7:14. School HVAC controller upgrade, $108,000. Ways and Means voted 13-0-0. Capital Budget voted 0-6. School Committee voted, supported this unanimously. Yeah, we're doing 14. So, we're going to do these as we know, as we usually do, spending articles, going to Ways and Means and Capital Budget. So, I understand our Chair of Ways and Means is missing, so we'll go to the Chair of the Schools Subcommittee for a comment on this one. Mr. Riggs?
Thank you. Roger Riggs, Precinct 3, and Chair of the School Subcommittee. The School Subcommittee looked at all the warrant articles. On this one, with the HVAC controller, this is at Marshall Simons. The original units at Marshall Simons for the air conditioning and heat were installed in 2004. There was a big renovation in 2011 that didn't touch the HVAC system. The current control system for the HVAC is essentially ended life by the manufacturer train, and they're not willing to write a maintenance contract. So, this $108,000 is for a full-scale replacement of the control system, not the heating and air conditioning equipment. And the Subcommittee voted, I agree with that already, 13-0-0.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. Mr. Sinessi?
Adam Sinessi, Capital Budget. Capital Budget passed this 5-0 to 1.
Did I mess up your vote? Oh, well, take me out back and shoot me. My apologies. I better check all my votes with you. Maybe I should just let you give the votes. So, yes, somebody held it, so there was a question? Thank you. Seeing no hands raised, either in person or online, we'll put it to a vote. Oh, there we go. Daryl, go ahead.
Give some background, but if we can get some more from the school department, that'd be helpful.
Hello? Thank you. On this particular issue, no other solutions were looked at. This is a proprietary system. This is trained. So, they are proprietary, so we did go with a trained solution in order to replace a trained solution.
Thank you, Mr. Kuna. Anything else? Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll put this to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? There being a clear majority in favor, this motion passes. So, let's go on to 7:15. Pine Glen Bathroom Repairs, $65,000. Mr. Riggs, if you could give the Ways and Means vote and some background, please.
Sure. Ways and Means voted unanimously in favor of this. The condition of the bathrooms at Pine Glen, in particular the stall dividers and the other fixtures in the bathroom is they are metal and they've been decaying and rusting out. So, this is to replace the dividers and clean up, fix up the bathrooms so they're usable. The, even though there's quite a bit of work in schools and other areas, and there's, you know, a lot of work going in other schools, there's some question about whether, you know, Pine Glen will be continued in use, and the School Committee has voted to use, to continue to support for schools. So, we need to keep the schools, you know, well-maintained and as attractive and good places to learn. Yeah, Subcommittee, or Ways and Means voted unanimously in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. Mr. Sinessi, please.
So, Capital Budget went 3 to 3 on this one. There were mixed emotions about, you know, funding infrastructure and buildings that frankly are still moving parts on. You know, as far as things happening in other buildings, the financials of that is unsettled, and contingencies that may come with that remain unsettled. And information changes by the day, because I just saw the MSBA plan was presented at School Committee last night that we've been allowed into the feasibility study. So, this isn't something that has to happen next year. It was built into a capital plan. The next time I saw any improvements on buildings in the capital plan relative to Pine Glen, there was nothing scheduled for until 2025. So, there was really no reason to move this up in the capital plan. And we have time to make decisions, and we can do that rationally without spending money first.
Thank you, Mr. Sinessi. Dr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think things are more settled from the School Committee perspective. They have voted to maintain a four-school elementary configuration. That means we have to continue to maintain four elementary schools. Even if they were not maintaining four elementary schools, New Fox Hill will not be online for six years, potentially seven years. We need to make sure that our buildings are clean, useful, moving forward. It's not unfamiliar for this body to annually invest in upgrading bathrooms. They take a lot of abuse, and we find that keeping our bathrooms updated and clean, the students treat the bathrooms better moving forward. So, most of this work is just for partitions. The partitions deteriorate over time, given the bad aim of some of our students. And so, we just need to replace them. And the cost of not doing this and delaying, again, the bathrooms will work, yes, but it only gets more expensive if we wait. And I just want to make sure that I restate to this body that in future town meetings that you'll be seeing us periodically, we're going to need to invest in Pine Glen over time, using the warrant process, again, to maintain four elementary schools that are functioning highly. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Conti. Are there questions on this article? Mr. Van Kamp? Hello?
Dave Van Kamp, Precinct 7. I don't question the merits of this. Bathrooms fall apart, they got to be replaced. My question is more on the backup and the numbers we've given. And by the way, thank you, whoever put up the cover sheets, very helpful. If I add up the quotes in the backup, it comes to about $57,000. You're asking for 65. It's a difference of about, just shy of $8,000. Why the discrepancy, and what happens if it comes in under budget? What happens to the money?
Mr. Kuna?
Hello? First, I would hope that it comes in under budget, to get right to that question. But if it doesn't, the contingency would be that extra dollar value that's added to it. So, when those quotes were requested, what we've seen recently is that parts and material, a lot are being delayed, and a lot are being upcharged by the time we're able to get them. So, unless we can order something right now, two months from now, three months from now, four months from now, we're seeing that those prices are different. The other part is, is that when we take partitions off, depending on where and how we mount them, there may be some floor or wall repair. So, there are some unknowns that we don't know until we actually take some of these apart.
Quick follow-up, if I might?
Go ahead.
We all know about contingencies, and we've all done any sort of remodeling, we know. You open up a wall, you never know what you're going to get. Is there a methodology that you follow to establish these contingencies? Because frankly, I've looked through all of these articles, and all of the numbers don't add up to what you've asked for, but the percentages are all off. You know, it's not 14, this is 14% at this point, others, you know, up as much as 30%. You guys are just taking a stab in the dark, you know? We're the stewards of the town's money. I want to have better understanding of the thought process before I vote in favor.
No, I did not use a, I'm sorry, through the chair. I did not use a constant variable. I rounded up to a whole number. $7,000 may seem like a lot, but given that one toilet or one partition, maybe close to $3,500. I thought that, knowing what the project looked like, that that would be suitable for this particular project to carry 7,000 extra in it.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
And I just want to be very specific about the second part of your question, is the warrant money can only be spent on this project. And if we come in under budget, which we always try to, then the money gets turned back to the town. We can't use it for other projects.
Online, Ms. O'Brien, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Patricia O'Brien, Precinct 2. Can someone just address for me briefly ADA compliance in terms of bathroom facilities in Pine Glen? I noticed that this quote doesn't leave room for any, for addressing that issue in these particular bathrooms, but I just wonder about compliance in general for the building, since moving forward, we're not likely to trigger any compliance issues if we're doing this piecemeal. Thanks.
We have full intentions of making sure that these bathrooms are compliant and bringing them up to code with the new partitions. We don't believe that we will trigger any thresholds that will require us to above and beyond just the bathroom repairs that we're requesting in the warrant article.
Any further questions? Seeing none, let's put this to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Mr. Bunkie, you have, oh, no, it's gone. All right. There being a clear majority in favor, this motion passes. Brings us to 7:17. Burlington Sports Field Master Plan. Excuse me. Okay, 7:16. Pine Glen HVAC, $500,000. Ways and Means vote was 13-0-0. And I have Capital Budget at 5-0-1. Is that correct, Mr. Sinessi? And School Committee voted this 5-0. Mr. Riggs, please.
Well, Ways and Means voted unanimously in support of this option. The, so, this is for similar rationale of maintaining Pine Glen. It should be noted that Pine Glen does not have any air conditioning at the moment. And there are times during the summer months and the spring and fall in which some of the rooms become too hot to use productively. The $500,000 covers the basic 18 classrooms plus some other staff areas that are used with mini splits that have an exterior unit that feeds one or two interior air conditioners. I think probably Bob Kuna can do a better job of explaining the details. Ways and Means supported it unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. Capital Budget. Mr. Sinessi?
Could amend the record from earlier. Capital Budget went 0-6 on this one. And really, the thinking was, again, the issue of the buildings remains unsettled, and now we're half a million dollars into this. We just want to see a planned approach that addresses, as was alluded earlier, ADA compliance and more comprehensive issues related to that building. So, why not wait a year and build some of these programs into the 10-year plan? Because right now, to the credit of, to the credit of the 10-year plan, I do see a new HVAC into the, in the plan right now for the next 10 years at Pine Glen. But I don't see any of these other projects. So, if we are going to move ahead with Pine Glen, it's time to start talking about what the plan for Pine Glen is. And the fact that so many of these things just happened in the last two weeks before town meeting, these things need to be discussed in forums on a more timely basis before we come to town.
Dr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And again, just very respectfully, these things have not come into view in the last two weeks. School Committee, every 10 years, does a master plan on every building. In 2017, again, they put together a 10-year master plan. Architects came out, looked at every building. We are working from that plan, utilizing this plan. They said we should prioritize the high school renovation. That's why we submitted the high school renovation as our priority to the state. The state has not accepted the high school for the last, I think, 10 times, even though we presented it then. The second priority they had was for us to replace Fox Hill. So, instead of doing the same thing over and over again, we moved on to Fox Hill. The Fox Hill was accepted. Once the Fox Hill was accepted, and now is in the second stage of feasibility, that cemented plans, again, School Committee had a choice to either consolidate or maintain four schools. They've decided to maintain four schools. These have been conversations that have been going on for at least a couple of years, because I've been a part of them. Again, we are going to do that. Town Meeting has supported a similar type of upgrade to Francis Wyman Elementary School that we completed over two years. This would be a similar-type project for Pine Glen. The Fox Hill would obviously have HVAC in a new building, and that would mean all of our schools, when the Fox Hill is completed, would have heating and cooling systems that would be, allow us to maintain not only heat, but cooler temperatures and maximize airflow in classrooms. So, again, with respect, please, these aren't two-week conversations. These are happening over multiple years with experts that you also have funded to do master planning of our, of our school buildings.
Thank you, Dr. Conti. Online, Ms. Goldsmith, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Jen Goldsmith, Precinct 7. And I actually have a family member that works in Pine Glen, and I have personally been there during the summer months when it is so it's 93 degrees in the rooms. So, I know for the kids and the teachers, and they've especially had to go through the hot weather when they had masks on, so I don't, I do believe that this is a great idea, but the concerning thing I have is, in the price, it says environmental services for removal of asbestos-containing materials have not been included. Pine Glen, I'm assuming, has asbestos. What is the plan that if you're installing these and come across it, what's the plan to pay for that? Thank you.
Hello? Thank you. So, we have already abated Pine Glen twice to do the top floor and the bottom floor in two consecutive years. We also just updated our AHERA reports two months ago. So, we're aware of any possible asbestos-containing materials, and we don't believe that this project would impact that at all.
Thank you, Mr. Kuna. Any follow-up, Ms. Goldsmith?
All set. Thank you.
Mr. Miller?
Miller, Precinct 4. I've heard with this article and the previous one, some of the justification for doing this is that the School Committee voted to keep the four-school system, four elementary schools. But what I'd like to know is, is that cast in concrete? Or can the MSBA sort of dictate and say, well, you might have to go with a three-school system, and Pine Glen won't be around for a while, won't be around in the future?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. MSBA is allowing Burlington two choices. A five-homeroom Fox Hill or a three-homeroom Fox Hill. I'm trying to explain that, when I say home room, I'm saying like three first grades, three second grades, three third grades. And so, they gave us both choices, and the School Committee has chosen the four-school option. So, the MSBA has allowed the community to maintain four elementary schools. The second part of that question is, even if we were to consolidate and go to three elementary schools, the Pine Glen doesn't go away. We would still want to maintain that building for any additional space we would need. Personally, an I statement, it's difficult if school buildings are not maintained, even if you don't need them, because over time, it's much more cost-effective to keep a building because student populations expand and contract. So, I would want to maintain Pine Glen. There could be other functions. There could be expansion of preschool. There could be need for swing space if we're renovating this building. Having a functioning Pine Glen would, again, allow us to have that flexibility. But again, the School Committee has voted for a four elementary school, to maintain a four-school, elementary school configuration into the future. MSBA is allowing the community to do that while supporting replacing the Fox Hill school.
Thank you, Dr. Conti. Online, Zee Wang, please.
Moderator. Zee Wang from Precinct 5. I actually reached out to Pine Glen Principal, Mr. Lyons, and talked to him about this. And he did mention that the second floor gets extremely hot in the summer. And there's a second, third, fourth, and fifth grade in special needs class on the second floor. So, in the summer, in the summer day, or say in the end of May or June, when it's really hot and humid, it's a, it's difficult for the student and also the teacher. So, it gets very uncomfortable, and especially with a mask on. And this week, they have masks and casts, and the next week, they have a science for the fifth grader. So, I think it will be great. Oh, I also ask my kids, because they go to Pine Glen too. I ask them, how do they cool off in the summer? Because one of my kids is a fifth grader already. And then he said, well, we drink cold water and open the window. I felt really bad for them, you know? And then, so, I think for the 261 students and 43.6 staff, we could support this article. I definitely am supportive of this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wang. Online, Ms. Cadillac, please.
Hi there. Sorry for not being familiar with this, but just a clarification. Somebody had mentioned earlier that Francis Wyman has undergone a similar, similar project. I was wondering if you could clarify that. Does Francis Wyman now have mini splits in all of their classrooms?
For our protocol, please. Name and precinct, please.
Niki Cadillac, Precinct 6. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
You got, you got cut off, Nikki, so go ahead.
All right, I'm going to start all the way over, okay? I'll try to make it quick. Niki Cadillac, Precinct 6. It was either Dr. Conti or Mr. Kuna who mentioned that a similar project has been undergone in Francis Wyman. I was wondering if you could clarify, does Francis Wyman have mini splits in their classrooms then? I just am not as familiar with that school building. Thank you.
Mr. Kuna, please.
Yes, we are talking about Francis Wyman. Two years ago, we did Francis Wyman similar to this. They have split units and univents in their classrooms. The split units do provide air conditioning and heat. So, they have a dual system that we're proposing as well for Pine Glen.
Thank you, Mr. Kuna. Online, Mr. Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Marty Pearson, Precinct 3. I'd like to just remind the body that we're in a situation where, during the last pandemic, it was very important there was adequate heat ventilation in all of the classrooms in order for, we did have school half the time during the middle of the pandemic, and that was because our classrooms was, were relatively well-ventilated. And so, we are going to need to make sure that all of our schools and all of our other buildings too need to be well-ventilated. The other thing is, is that temperatures are going to continue to be rising, and we're likely to have temperatures in May that will remind people of June in the next five years. And so, we need to be preparing for that as well. So, with, I mean, we just have to upgrade the heating and cooling systems for these buildings because the world is changing around us. And we have to be, we have to be thinking about what will this building need five years from now. And five years from now, it's going to need all this stuff.
Microphone, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Shari Ellis, Precinct 3. I appreciate the dialogue and the backup that was provided, and the thought of maintaining a building regardless whether it remains as an elementary school or some other project. And there was mention of a 2017 master plan for the schools. I have requested that twice now and haven't received it. I would like the town meeting members, everyone, to receive a copy of that so we can see, because as Mr. Sinessi said, some of these items are not in the capital plan, so they appear to just be arbitrary and come out of nowhere. So, if there is a plan, you know, we'd like to be able to see that. So, I am in support of this article after listening to the fact of we need to maintain a building, a building, whether it is for an elementary school, or if it's not, we might use it for something else. So thank you.
Anything further? Yes, ma'am, up at the back corner. Get her a microphone, please. Name and precinct.
It's Adrian Callahan from Precinct 7. I just have a question. What's the sense of urgency for this project right now?
I didn't hear the question. Sorry.
What is the sense of urgency to do this project right now? Like if, like when will it be done? How long will it take to get done? And if we're talking about it won't be done for three years, can we push it? Or, you know what I'm saying? I'm just saying, is there another option, maybe not to do it right now, this second?
Mr. Kuna, please.
The sense of urgency for this project is multiple, right? So first is, is that in three or four years, our focus is definitely going to be more on Fox Hill, and then potentially any high school upgrades as well. Second would be, is that the longer we wait on this, the cost, the more it's going to cost money. So that's going to increase costs and time. Second would be, or I'm sorry, third would be, is that we've heard our teachers and we've heard our students. So the urgency is, is that we're already looking at warm weather this week, and we're already starting to see, you know, the complaints and so forth coming in, and we haven't even hit the hot weather yet. We've been hearing the complaints for years. So we've constantly had to bring over portable air conditioning units, portable fans, put fans in the hallways, we run extension cords, you know? We just look through any possible way we can to reduce the temperatures in that building in particular. So again, there's been an urgency for a while, but we're here now asking for your support.
Yes, sir, right here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dave Webb, Precinct 7. Yeah, along those lines. So this is a very expensive project. I'm wondering, is, are these air conditioning units and split units have to be put in throughout the, the building? Is there no working air conditioning system or heating system? I guess it's two separate things, so. So the idea is to have these split units, or whatever you call them, that would do both the heating and cooling, right?
Mr. Kuna.
The existing system is a single boiler unit that was installed approximately 1990. It only provides hot water heat through univents in the building. There is no air conditioning at all in the building. I'll take that statement back. We did a vestibule upgrade in 2017 for the front office to provide double doors. So there is an air conditioning unit in the main office. That is one unit right there. There is no air conditioning units in the classrooms.
And it, one more point. In the past couple of years, we've approved money for roofing repairs at Pine Glen and so forth, as with Fox Hill, of course. So what's, if, if we're not going to be using Pine Glen for teaching purposes in the future with the Fox Hill thing going, coming up, will, what is the chances of having more repairs and so forth on Pine Glen in the near, in the near future? Are you going to keep having to come back to us?
Through the moderator. And again, I apologize if I was confusing. School committee has voted for a four elementary school option. Pine Glen, for the foreseeable future, is going to be utilized as an elementary school. Our plan then would be to maintain Pine Glen using the plan that we have, Ms. Ellis, that we will make available and share. I think there might even be one at the library now, but let me, I'll make sure everyone gets access to them. So we would continue to do that through the warrant process. The only other process that we have available to us is the MS, the Massachusetts School Building Authority grant process, and they have different grants that are available. They have accelerated repair. So if there's a roof cave-in, a community can fix a school roof. If there's an emergency, if a boiler breaks or something, you can do an emergency repair. And then they have renovation, and then they have replacement. If we got a new Fox Hill completed and we got the high school renovated, would we submit in, would someone stand here 15 years, 20 years from now and say, we need a new Pine Glen? They very well might. But in the meantime, we're going to be maintaining Pine Glen to the best of our ability so that learning in classes can, can continue. So yes, you will probably see regular warrants for Pine Glen and regular warrants for the high school moving forward, connected to a master plan, which I realize we need to do a better job communicating.
Mr. Moderator, one follow-up. So yes, maybe this is in the master plan that we haven't seen. The specific question is, do you have any major articles that you think could be coming back in the next couple of years with, for Pine Glen? That you, that you know of or remember from here?
Mr. Kuna, please.
As far as major goes, it's one of our smaller buildings at approximately 62,000 square feet. So we've already, like I said, done an abatement on top and bottom floors. We've already replaced flooring. Bathrooms is definitely a high priority for us. The roof is eight years old with a 30-year warranty, so I don't expect to come back for that. The boiler, like I said, approximately 1990. Adding this warrant article would help to prolong the life of the boiler, but at some point, that will obviously need to be repaired. Structurally, the building, I believe, is sound. Potentially, if we outgrow space, we may need to look at providing additional space. The kitchen is relatively new. The walk-in refrigerator freezer is three years old. So again, not major, major items, but really more of the day-to-day upkeep and yearly upkeep.
Thank you, Mr. Kuna. Mr. Duttucci.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dan Duttucci, Precinct 6. Dr. Conti, when do you think the doors will be opened at the new Fox Hill for schools, for children to be let in? When the building is complete? Five years, six years, seven years? Give us an idea.
What I usually tell parents is two years from when you see a bulldozer, and we're probably two or three fro, two to three from when you'll see equipment on site. And I'm sorry, it's not as exact as people would want.
That's fine. So I'm saying six years. Do you, do you think that the new Fox Hill school will be big enough to take on an increase, an increasing enrollment along with all of the Pine Glen students? Are we, are we building a school that big so that we can shut down the Pine Glen school and put everybody in that one school?
Not initially. We would be building Fox Hill to fit into a four elementary school model. And so the Fox Hill that they're talking about would be a little smaller than Memorial School. So that's about the size that the state is saying that they're supporting. We have some ability to make adjustments based on other programming that we have. So for instance, there's currently a lab collaborative program at Fox Hill, so we would account for that space, so that the school will have classrooms that, that we can utilize. But it's not being designed to hold all of the elementary students at Fox Hill and Pine Glen initially.
All right. Thank you very much for that. And for that reason, I'm going to support this, because those kids are going to be there right through, I think, when the Fox Hill school opens. He just mentioned it now, we don't want to have a 800-student elementary school. And if, if we let it run down to nothing, then we're going to be in real bad trouble. So at least maintain it, you know, and cut our losses, and we'll go forward. Thank you.
Online, Mr. Murphy.
Move the question, please.
The question has been moved. It's a non-debatable motion. Requires two-thirds vote. This is Warfield. Do we have a poll to go out? All those in favor of moving the question? All those opposed? There being a clear two-thirds majority wishing to move the question, so that passes? So that brings us to voting on this article. All those in favor? Thank you. Opposed? Thank you. There being a clear majority in favor, this article passes. Let's move on to 717. Burlington Sports Field Master Plan for the school department, $70,000. Ways and Means supported this, 13-0-0. Capital Budget voted one in favor, five opposed. School Committee voted 5-0 in favor. Mr. Riggs, please, for Ways and Means.
Thank you. So Ways and Means looked at this. The requests came through the, through the superintendent and through the athletic departments of the school, and various parents who have raised issues about various fields in town. It's, it seemed to us that it was very important to get a comprehensive view of the status and the update of all of the fields and all the playing surfaces in town where Burlington sports teams play, as a preamble to being able to be more deliberate about upgrades and maintenance and, and gaps in coverage. So Ways and Means voted it, to support unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. Mr. Sinasi, please.
So Capital Budget went one to five on this one. And this one's kind of funny for me, because I have a child that, that uses the fields. And I remember in the middle of April, running down to a field at around 8:00 to pull her off the field for soccer, and another group of elementary kids were getting on the field at around 8:00 because the fields don't, because there were no other fields in town that were open at that point in the season. So I see this because I live it, but I also, I was the only person that voted in favor of it on my committee. I just don't think the importance of it was conveyed, or the, the, the purpose of it was conveyed to an audience that, that doesn't live it the way that I live it, because I have a kid in the system. And I think that they need to be given the tools in town meeting, and it's about, it comes back to communication. And they need to be given the tools so they can go back and justify to their constituents why, you know, the importance to the fields may have some, something to do with the quality of life in the community and things, and things to that nature. So I see the need for this. I understand what the purpose of the initiative is. I just don't think that that was received at, at our committee meeting, and that's all I can really say about it. It's just, I think it's better communication.
Thank you, Mr. Sinasi. Further comments on this article? Mr. Boyven, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyven, Precinct 1. I thought this was an excellently-written proposal. It was very comprehensive. It had extremely reasonable timeframes in it. It's a matter of weeks to get the proposal accomplished. So I would support it with the caveat of perhaps be careful what you ask for, because they might come back with some rather expensive recommendations. We don't really know until we see what the report results in, but I support it.
Thank you, Mr. Boyven. Not showing up? Oh, there we go. Yes, sir. James F.R.A. I can't see the rest of your name, sorry.
James Frazek, Precinct 6. Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question about whether this covers all of the fields that are used by all of the youth programs? Or is this intended just as for the school department? I noticed at the end of the backup that it lists just the, you know, the high school athletics program and what fields they use. But, and I can speak to what Mr. Sinasi was saying, that, you know, we have kids that are, you know, elementary school kids practicing at 7:30 at night, middle schoolers at 8:30 at night, you know, because there are no fields available. And so I guess my concern would be that, you know, that this really needs to be a comprehensive, you know, look of all the fields in town as, you know, traveling through the, the town in the fields that there are, you know, a number of fields that are in somewhat deplorable condition. And, you know, it'd be great to have a full look across all the programs that, that, you know, we're providing good fields for our, our youth to, to use. Thank you.
Dr. Conti, please.
I believe it accounts for most of the fields in town, and again, there may be some playing surfaces that are not. We could certainly talk to the person who was awarded this contract to make sure they cover, they cover everything. And I think there's a list in the, in the backup that's fairly comprehensive.
Anything further, Mr. Frazek?
Just one follow-up. So yeah, just with that in mind, you know, in the back, you know, it lists, you know, Rahannes, you know, as one, and, you know, upper field is in great condition, lower field is, you know, a swamp, to put it politely. But, you know, I don't see things of, you know, in terms of like the baseball programs that use Simons Park, or, you know, any of the other parks in town for, you know, for the youth baseball program. So, you know, I, I'm kind of, you know, torn, you know, I think, you know, this, if the intention is just to look at the school department field, I, I think this doesn't go quite far enough. Thank you.
I don't think there's any answer needed, Dr. Conti?
No, sir.
You can give one if you'd like. Mr. Miller, please, online. Dave Miller, Precinct 4. Yes, I saw in one of the backup materials, the Capital Budget Committee suggested that this could be done internally, using internal staff, rather than hiring it out. So I'd like Mr. Sinasi, if he would, to comment on that. Tell us what his opinion is.
My personal opinion, as, as someone who was in favor of this, is my personal opinion is, no, we, we need, we need to hire a professional to do this. However, however, coming to, you know, coming to a, a committee and asking for $70,000, that's the salary of someone who lives in Burlington, or that's the household salary in some instances. And so I personally see the importance of this. It, it just needed, the way that it was conveyed, we didn't see the capital requests. I didn't, we didn't hear about capital request at a school committee meeting until after the warrant went out. I mean, it was that late in the process that it was mentioned. So there wasn't a lot of time to absorb this. We had a week to get this done.
Online. Pat, do you have a question? Pat, do you have a question?
Thank you. I'd just like to emphasize that I hope that the engineering consultants would, in fact, take into consideration the impact of upkeep and to consider water consumption and water use in conservation measures, as well as something that we've been talking about the past few years, which is shade. As temperatures do increase, in fact, players will need shaded areas. And so drainage for the frequent rain events and shade for heat control. Thank you.
I hope you took notes. Anything further? Yes, ma'am, way up the back. I can't see that far.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Liz Duttucci, Precinct 6. I do support this. And my question is, some of these fields, I think varsity field brings in revenue. Is that correct for events that we host?
Mr. Duttucci, I don't think we rent varsity fields very much. I think the arrangement in Burlington makes the plan, from my perspective, even more important because between park and rec and the schools, we're responsible for all the playing surfaces. So for the youth programs and all, they usually have free access, I know, to the school facilities. I'm not sure if there's revenue there.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Egan, please.
Brendan Egan, Parks and Recreation. We do, there are fees, weekend fees charged for outside groups to use varsity field. The money goes back into, you know, trash bags, supplies to clean the field. And although the school department maintains the two turf fields, we do do all the trash coverage, porta-potties, things like that that go out.
So it's a wash?
We probably lose money.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Sinessi, please.
I'm speaking as a Precinct 1 member, but again, I'm going to, because I'm in favor of this personally, I'm going to ask the question because I think it could help with clarification on things. Do we have a... Will this help settle the organics versus non-organics on the playing fields and the quality of the playing fields? I know that the school committee has a position on this. Will the school committee potentially, is there implications that could come out of this master plan that could influence future policy on this?
Dr. Conti, please.
I'd be really remiss to speak for the school committee, but, Mr. Sinessi, I would hope so. Please, athletics is really, are really important to me. I think they're important to kids. Organic or inorganic, not my area of expertise. So again, I think that would be welcomed if someone could come in and give us a plan. Again, the way it is organized in Burlington is park and recreation and the schools really maintain the playing surfaces for school programs, for community programs, and for youth programs. So we're taking care of it. I really requested this article, as was said by Ways and Means, to be quite honest, so that I could say no to people. Because every season, we get calls about the condition of fields and that we should prioritize one sport over another. And again, it's not my area. And I'm hoping a plan would at least allow us to have a pathway forward and allow us to spend money wisely as we do move forward. And, Mr. Sinessi, I heard you that we should do, if this plan is supported, we should make sure that you have a copy of it along with all town meeting members moving forward.
Online, Mr. Pearson.
Monty Pearson, Precinct 3. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Could I have a clarification on whether or not all of the sports fields used by Burlington children are going to be covered in this master plan? All of the fields?
Mr. Kuna, that's a yes or no question? You can elaborate, sorry, Bob.
I have to elaborate, please. It is the intent for us to address all of the playing fields for children, yes. If we have not, which is why we have a comprehensive list, addressed a particular field, there is a $7,000 contingency that we are asking for above the $63,000 request in order for us to add any additional fields that come up or any instances that come up that require extension of work above and beyond the proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Kuna. Anything further? Seeing nothing? Is there a poll ready, Amy? Okay, send her out, please. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Thank you. There being a clear majority in favor, this article passes. 7-18. For the school's music floor reconstruction, $450,000. Ways and Means supported this 11-1-0. Capital Budget voted 0-6 opposed. School Committee supported this 5-0. Mr. Riggs, please.
The Ways and Means School Subcommittee talked to the administration about this item. The existing conditions in the band room and the chorus room, both of the floors have stepped down, not risers, anti-risers, that are, have a couple of faults. One is they're not accessible. There's, you know, they don't meet accessibility guidelines. And secondly, they're, the way that the activities are conducted, they don't really need those that stepped arrangement for things. It has been proposed to essentially level the floors, to fill them in. The price tag is pretty steep. And I think probably we can get some more detail about how that works from Bob Kuna. But Ways and Means thought that this, for the most part, we did have one, I don't want to call it a contrarian vote, everybody votes their own opinion here. It was 11-1-0. But generally, there was, it was supported to level the floor, make it more usable for students and teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. Mr. Sinessi, please.
So Capital Budget voted 0-6 on this. I mean, we've established that there are a lot of moving parts. There are a lot of things in the high school that need... There are a lot of moving parts that are going to cost a lot of money. And a lot of those moving parts that are going to cost a lot of money are still in the high school also. Definitely, the argument for this is to bring it to accessibility standards. But there are other factors in that building that we should be examining. If we're going to renovate that building in a mandated way, that is really why we're doing a lot of these projects. Because we need to fix the boilers and to fix the boilers, it opens up Pandora's box of implications that are going to cost a lot. Prior to this, I had never seen this ask in any 10-year plan. This was never an accessibility issue before in a 10-year plan from that standpoint. We acknowledge that we need to fix the high school, to the point that we're, the school committee is establishing a building committee for the high school. But there's no money allocated into the 10-year plan for the high school until, like, it's not, we don't even address the high school until year 10 of the current 10-year plan that was just released this year. So there's just a lot of, you know, dissonance. And I don't understand, collectively, our committee doesn't seem to understand the approach or the lack of a planned approach. We do understand that it's a complicated process with MSBA involved, and we don't blame any one board or committee. But this can wait another year for a better plan, a more comprehensive plan.
Any response, Dr. Conti?
And through the moderator. Thank you. We've been talking about renovating this building for quite some time. We've been working with the town's financial team about the potential cost of that. We've been trying to do that through the Massachusetts School Building renovation program. We have not been supported, again, over, I think it's been about 10 years. We just did our 11th submission again this year. In the interim, we did submit Fox Hill, and Fox Hill is, again, moving forward. That changed the priorities a little bit. Probably sometime next year, we're going to be asking this body to support a roughly $48 million, I'm guessing that, I am guessing that, I am guessing that, some big number for an elementary school. And working with the town's financial team and in the financial presentation that you had at the start of town meeting, the way that we can get the high school done is then to spread out the costs of the needed repairs, again, in this building. So if we're going to piecemeal this building together, there are two sort of larger items that we will also need to come back to town meeting for that are accounted for in the master plan. The HVAC system, again, upwards of roughly...
Thirty.
Thirty million dollars. I'm sorry, these numbers are huge. That would trigger, then, us bringing the building up to accessibility codes. And then we have the science labs that also need to be renovated, another large project. So in order to spread out the costs, as Mr. Sagarino mentioned, to sort of keep the debt curve manageable, my belief is, working through the building committee that we are establishing locally, not with the state, that we are going to be moving forward through free cash projects of this building annually to try to knock out some of the accessibility issues because we won't be able to do it all at once through the, either the debt plan of Burlington itself without disrupting operating budgets, or through a state program because we haven't been accepted. So while we haven't discussed the accessibility issues of these, the music and the choral rooms specifically, the music and choral rooms were identified as an accessibility issue at the high school that would need to be addressed. So by addressing it this year, we can knock off this one accessibility piece and continue. And I'm assuming next May, you'll see some other projects at the high school, potentially, again, as Mr. Sinessi mentioned, with a more comprehensive plan that we could put forward, again, through a building committee. But it seems to me that this high school renovation is not going to happen all at once through a large project because the state is not going to partner with us or has not proven to do that yet. And so we're going to need to address some of the bigger pieces of that renovation locally and then piecemeal the accessibility needs and requirements that come with that moving forward. So this would be one of those, one of those pieces.
Thank you, Dr. Conti. Online, Ms. Wong, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Shafan Wong, Precinct 4. Thank you for the capital warrant that was submitted in the past 24 hours. It did answer some of my questions. I wanted to ask about the bid that was attached. How many bids were solicited for this particular project? And was the bid that was attached in backup the preferred bid?
Please. Mr. Kuna?
Yeah, so in the backup, there is not an actual bid. We have not gone out to bid for this project yet. We have an in-house architect that we did go out to bid for, which we solicited to then turn around and provide us with an estimate. This particular architect has done this project twice in two neighboring schools, one in Everett and one in Whittier. Exactly the same exact thing, where they've taken a sunken floor in a music room and then engineered those and filled them in with concrete. So the estimate provided is based on the work that was done, like you said, at two neighboring schools. And again, depending on the cost of concrete, when we were to go out to bid, if this is supported, if we are under that, yes, any money would go back to free cash. But again, the estimate is not a bid. We would have to go out to bid for this.
Thank you, Mr. Kuna. Mr. Duttucci.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dan Duttucci, Precinct 6. Dr. Conti, on this construction assistance, that's the best word I can say, that you get from the state, like, say, for instance, on a project like this with $450,000, how would the split be? I know when we do new schools, it's like, you know, up to 50%, 45, 50, or something like that. So just say we did, you know, get recently some standing with the school building on these type of renovations. How would these costs be split? Would they cover the whole thing?
Dr. Conti, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Duttucci, I want to make sure I understand your question correctly. So for this one project, this one piece, the $450,000?
No, no, I'm talking about if you had a renovation project that was accepted, how do they reimburse you for things like that? Is it individual things or just one blanket bill for everything?
It's usually negotiated as part of the process, and there's usually a range. So it's, I think, somewhere between 40 and 45%. I just want to look at Mr. Denizio. Is he here? What, you've built a school. What was the percentage for the schools that you did? Again, I think Memorial was here, it was eight, 10 years ago. Was it about 44% I think is what it was? I think about 45%, Mr. Duttucci, is what I think.
On a renovation, you said that we've been trying to get a renovation from the school building?
Yes.
So is that the same, do they give you the same amount of money like you were going to build the new school?
My belief is yes. So again, it depends on the size of the renovation. If the renovation was $100 million, I think we would be around in the same range, right around mid-40%.
Right, right. So what you would do is, you would have to submit everything, a lot of the things that we have here going forward, and tell them that this is what we need to renovate the school so we don't have to replace it. They'll usually come up with 50, 50, or 40, 60, or something like that. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So no matter what, most of these things that we're talking about, we're going to have to pay for them anyhow. And like I said, with the Pine Glen, Pine Glen's not going anywhere for quite a while. And unless something happens tomorrow, we're going to be going on renovating and keeping the high school in good working order. So I do approve this.
Yes, ma'am, in the middle here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dina Wasaf, Precinct 1. Since there are multiple accessibility pieces that were identified, why the music school, music room first? Is it, was chosen for this cycle? Is it because it's the cheapest? Why are we tackling this project first? Thank you.
To the moderator. Twofold to this answer. One is, it fit the dollar figure for the capital warrant request this year. But this is a recurring request that has come from the music department. I don't want to specifically say any staff or student, but there would be a benefit to those bodies if this was done. So this is something that we are aware of. So it was definitely higher on our list to do.
Ms. Byer, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kathy Byer, Precinct 2. I just want to clarify because we started off talking about this is an accessibility issue, and then we went sort of all over the place. And the backup doesn't clarify what the problem was and what the need is and that this is going to correct. And so if you would just restate that for me, so I would be less confused, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Kuna, please.
Think of a set of stairs. So if you go into the music chorus rooms, which are right behind here, you walk in at ground level. There are stairs, three-and-a-half-foot-wide platforms that step down to the middle. There is no accessibility from the top to the bottom for people that need accessibility or for people that have difficulty or even for moving heavy equipment. So what this plan would do is, we've looked at mechanical lifts, we've looked at ramps, and given the... and given the spaces and given the dimensions and the grades of the room, a singular ramp would be, would exceed the grade, so we wouldn't be able to work that out. We would have to put multiple ramps in in order to accommodate that.
This is the only solution, but what you are looking to do is to fix it so that it is accessible, but it's also more workable in terms of moving equipment, instruments, other things around. And I just kept hearing other things, and it got confusing. Thank you.
Ms. Fristaci, please. Online.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Joanne Fristaci, Precinct 3. I, I just have a question. So many people are talking about MSBA funding, and the 10 years that we've been denied the funding, and that we're asking for the funding again. And I just wanted to clarify, the enrollment of the high school has indeed been decreasing steadily year after year after year. Is that correct, Dr. Conti, to now about 983 students?
To the point of this article.
Mr. Moderator, I'm not sure it's been declining year after year after year, but it is under 1,000 this year, and projected to be under 1,000 next year.
Thank you.
Projects with increasing enrollment. So I just want to make that point. If people are weighing whether or not we might get funding and deciding not to vote for this article because we might get funding, then in fact, we really aren't a candidate for funding if indeed the MSBA continues to fund projects with increasing enrollment rather than decreasing enrollment. Thank you.
Ms. Ellis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Shari Ellis, Precinct 3. I would like to ask a question about the bid, or not the bid, but the estimate, and what it really entails. The backup was very fuzzy, can't read it. And we talk about concrete and $450,000 for concrete. Did anyone come out and look at this? What is the current construction of the room now? Is it total concrete up above? Is it foam underneath? Will they be doing foam and concrete comparison? So I'd like an answer to that, and I'd also like an answer to, priority-wise, again, this is one component of the ADA. I have not seen it, again, in any backup of a capital plan, so I don't know the urgency to this. I'd rather have you come back and tell us what all of these projects are piecemeal, and then, you know, with a priority list of which ones are the most important. So, two questions, thank you.
Mr. Kuna, please.
If I could do the second question first, I think you have seen a blanket high school in the 10-year capital plan for the past 10 years, and it has not been broken down by each individual project. We, no? Well, so I think now you're starting to see these projects broken down, because we are not focusing on the high school as a whole right now. We're focusing on individual projects, but we will continue to submit to MSBA. We don't see it in the timeline right now to fit with the town's debt schedule anyways, so we're trying to focus on smaller projects that we can accommodate. That being said, the first question was, has an engineer or somebody else been out here to look at it? Yes. What it does entail is, is that there's approximately $40,000 for a full engineer study to be done, because we need to make sure that we can support that additional concrete going into that room. So $40,000 first, depending on any architectural needs that need to be done, either to exterior walls or interior walls, that would, of course, adjust the price. If the existing walls can hold it, then we would pour concrete. We do have to remove some electrical to bring that up above grade. We also would have to refinish the floor and put either a carpet or a rubber surface on top of it, and then we would have to move any attached furniture and/or fixtures in the room, and any heat structures that are in the room as well that are below grade. So that would all come out during the engineering study, but what we see there is similar to what happened in, like I said, the surrounding two schools where these projects happened. So while it does look vague, the estimate is pretty consistent with the company that has done this recently twice.
Thank you, Mr. Kuna. Ms. Ellis, a follow-up.
Thank you, I appreciate that backup for the actual engineering of this or whatever. That would be helpful going forward, more details like that, rather than emails back and forth going forward. And as far as the capital plan, I will respectfully disagree that I've looked at that, the high school, there has been broken out items. One of them that has been consistent has been an ice rink. So, you know, I would, I would like to, again, see, maybe the master plan that you have. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Dr. Conti.
Ms. Ellis, just to defend the ice rink, I think different town managers have had different philosophies about the 10-year capital plan. Some wanted aspirational projects, some wanted nothing, some wanted just, just what we were working on. So I think the hockey rink was an aspirational project from several town managers ago, and it's just, it stayed on the 10-year capital plan. So it all depends what people are asking for.
Thank you, Dr. Conti. Online, Mr. Cormier.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Cormier, Precinct 6. I have a question, and as someone who does have a disability, I'm a little bit perplexed because being raised here in town and actually going to that school, the whole purpose behind that design was, is that you would have a band or an orchestra-style music department, and, and the conductor would be down in that bottom well. And in using that room myself, I'm kind of curious as to the whole accessibility issue, as to why the importance of getting someone down into that well area, when, as someone with a, with a disability myself, I just don't get the whole principle of filling that in when, when there really isn't a need for accessibility down into that well. The whole design was for, for the conductor to be down there, and, and the different sections of, of the band would be subsequent around that semicircle. So someone that might have a disability still has access to the room, still has access to the top level. I just don't get spending $450,000 to fill that in when the justification just isn't there in my mind. And I'm speaking to someone with a disability.
Thank you, Mr. Cormier. Yes, Sally. Ms. Willard, please, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sally Willard, Precinct 4. I, I wonder, would you consider just doing the engineering study at, at this point and coming back at some point, say, a year from now, once you have those results? If that's a possibility, I would make a motion to amend this.
And, and I will rule that out of order. It's outside of the bounds easily of the four corners of this article, which is about fixing a floor, not just an engineering study.
Thank you. In that case, I am opposed to this.
Yes, ma'am, up in the back.
Just addressing the ADA issues, I'll say that I am in support of this, but it's very important to look at disparate impact versus disparate treatment. So a lot of people, when they think about accessibility and discrimination with the ADA, you're thinking about actual, specific rules, policies that say, you know, this person can't do this because of their disability, or, you know, with some of the other local regulations and statutes, like 151B, you know, because of your race or because of your gender, you can't do this. It sounds to me like with this plan for the music room, this is more of a disparate impact issue. So it's not a situation where they're saying, you know, someone in a wheelchair can't participate. It's a situation where the impact of the design of the room as it currently stands prevents someone with a wheelchair or another disability from participating as fully as the other students, whether it's becoming, you know, being a student conductor, or standing on the same step as other students who play the same instrument. I think it's important to recognize that and understand that, under the ADA and with various, you know, discrimination laws, this is something important to recognize, that there is disparate impact, where just the way something is, happens to, whether directly or indirectly, affects someone with a disability or in a different protected class. So I do support this. I think it's important to recognize that fact.
Thank you. Ms. Fristaci, your hand is up. Do you have another question?
No.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing nothing, we'll put this to a vote. Amy, do you have a poll to go out? Thank you. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. We're going to need a count. I have a couple volunteers who don't have to take off their shows. Count, please. Make it easier for the counting. All those opposed, please stand. How many?
Nineteen.
Nineteen. Five, six, thirteen. There being a majority in favor of this article, this article passes. Thank you. Myrna, Ms. Saltman, what can I do for you?
First of all, they're winning. Myrna Saltman, Precinct 2. Would you please give us a count on this vote? Numerical.
I've got 53 in favor and 46 opposed.
Roll call.
Really?
Yep.
We need seven people to stand for, in order for that to work.
We need to see who's paying attention at home. We need to see who's paying attention at home.
We've never done one on, through this. Okay.
Tell them what they're going to have to do, is that when you call their name, they're going to have to unmute themselves and say yes or no clearly.
Okay.
You could even have them say their name if you wanted to. And about 20 minutes later, so I guess we don't have to zone in tomorrow, tonight, do we?
No, maybe Wednesday.
Yeah.
Okay. This is going to take a while. I have to go through everyone, especially those people who are online. When I call your name, please unmute, state your name, and a yes or a no. Okay? And I don't know where people are, so you're going to have to listen and speak up. Ms. Bix Highland, please.
Vote was no.
Mr. Boyden.
Stand up so people remotely can see you.
Mr. Campbell. Mr. Glance.
I vote yes.
Mr. Hardy. Mr. Seiya.
Yes.
Mr. Sinessi. Ms. Veraganti. All right, we're into Precinct 2. Mr. Ondrade. Mr. Davison. Yes, what? Yes, what?
Can you please repeat what the people in the audience say? Because online, we can't hear what they say.
I second that request.
Ms. Murphy-Courier. Ms. O'Brien. Ms. O'Connell. That's a no. Ms. Peppano. No. No. Mr. Papianis. That was a yes. Ms. Phillips. Mr. Ryan.
Point of information. Mr. Moderator, this is Gregory Ryan in Precinct 1. John Ryan from Precinct 2 voted in my place for the last, when you went through my name. I vote yes.
My apologies.
It's okay, John. I'll forgive you.
Thank you, Greg.
Ms. Saltman. No. Ms. Traynor. Ms. Videm.
Yes.
Precinct 3. Mr. Connors. Mr. Connors. All right, move on. Ms. Amiani. Yes. Yes. Mr. Debona. Mr. Debona. Ms. Ellis. That was a no. Ms. Fustaci.
No.
Mr. Hartling. Mr. Marchesi.
No.
Mr. Mercier. Mr. Morin. It was a no. Mr. Morin. Ms. Nash, please. Mr. Noonan. Ms. Ulette. Eve. Mr. Pearson.
Yes.
Mr. Poopa. That was a yes. Mr. Raski. Yes. Mr. Riggs. Ms. Satirial. That was a yes. Precinct 4. Ms. Bonacera.
No.
Ms. Cooper. No. Mr. Gerbrands.
Mike Gerbrands, yes.
Mr. Harriman.
Yes.
Ms. Maniscalco.
Yes.
Mr. Miller. Mr. Monaco.
Yes.
That was a yes. Ms. Nowoycek. Ms. Nichols. Thank you. That was a no. Ms. Sickler. Ms. Warren. That's a no. Ms. Wong.
Mr. Moderator, I thought it should be postponed, and I was belaboring my vote, so I didn't vote. And there was, I did not vote.
Well, you can still vote now. No, please.
No.
Mr. Bunker. Mr. Callahan.
No.
Ms. Concession.
Yes.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Erin Ellis.
No.
Mr. Fay. Mr. Fay, are you still here? Thank you. That was a yes. Mr. Murphy. Ms. Neufeld.
Phyllis Neufeld, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Bonnie Nichols.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Frank O'Brien, no.
This is Frank O'Brien. Ms. Prendergast. Mr. Tate. Mr. Ursino. That was a no. Mr. Wing. She's not checked off as being here. Ms. Wang.
E-Wang, yes.
Mr. Wing. Ms. Zabelot, Mr. Zabelotny. Thank you. You only get one no, that's correct. One, excuse me, Mr. Eloisi. Right, right. Mr. Bell. Yes. Mr. Collins. Yes. Mr. Cormier. Cormier? Haven't heard any that's heard you. Yes. Mr. Daniel R. Detucci. Yes. Ms. Elizabeth Detucci. Ms. Mara Detucci. Mara Detucci? We'll move on. Mr. Fracksek. Mr. Eiler. Mr. Interess.
Harold Interess, no.
Mr. Kasky. Ms. Manny.
No.
Mr. Parsons. Mr. Round. That's a no. Ms. Chukab. Nicole Sprinkle-Cadillac.
Nikki Cadillac, Precinct 6, no.
Mr. Tralagan. Precinct 7. Mr. Brown. Ms. Callahan. That was a no. Ms. Colley. Ms. Cullen. Ms. Goldsmith.
Ms. Goldsmith, no.
Ms. Hughes. That's a no. Ms. Kazangian. Did I butcher your name? Okay, thank you. That's a no. Mr. Kelly. Jack, repeat. Mr. Martin.
Scott Martin, yes.
Mr. McSheffrey. That's a yes. Mr. Sax. That's a yes. Mr. Salamoni. Mrs. Schwartzman. Ms. Smith-Martin.
Lois Smith-Martin, votes yes.
Mr. Van Kamp. Mr. Webb. No. Mr. Woods. No. No. That completes it. Did we miss anybody?
Jeff Debona, Precinct 3. Can anyone hear me?
Yeah, raise your hand on the platform if you want to be addressed.
Thank you.
Mr. Debona?
I vote no.
Try not to confuse me. No. That was a no. Is there anybody else we missed?
Yes.
What's your vote, please?
Yes.
Anybody else we missed? Who are you?
Sorry, Sean Connors, Precinct 3. Vote no.
Last call. Polling, the voting is done. There being 57 in favor and 51 opposed, the motion passes. Okay, that brings us to 7-19. No, we just did 7-18.
No, I know, but we did 7-19 on Monday night.
We did?
Yeah, it was one of the ones that got through. Remember how you took?
Oh, okay. It wasn't held. Excuse me. There we go. All right. The next held, Article 720. Scoreboards for sports fields. $110,000. Ways and Means vote 12-0-0. Capital Budget voted 1 in favor, 5 opposed. School Committee supported it 5-0. Mr. Riggs, please.
Thank you. Ways and Means looked at this, both in the full committee and within the subcommittee with the schools. The proposal is to add three scoreboards. One at the Marshall Simons Middle School turf field. Golly, I forgot the other ones. One at, crap. At Francis Wyman and at, golly, blanking out. Anyway, so the use for it is that the, so several sports teams, varsity teams, play on all of these fields and the experience, some of the league, the mechan, I'm having a problem today. League play is greatly enhanced by the presence of the scoreboards. In fact, they can't play league games in some sports if they don't have a scoreboard. So that restricts the league play to turf field at the high school. The proposal is one hundred and ten thousand. It'll benefit both the school teams and the other youth sports teams that use these fields. Ways and Means unanimously approved it.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. Mr. Sinessi.
So, Capital Budget voted one in favor and five against on this. Again, I'm in the odd position to be the one that voted in favor. And I remember during the conversation that we had had with Dr. Conti and Mr. Kuna, was that, you know, there was a lot of interest on our committee about selling sponsorships to help subsidize the, to subsidize the scoreboards. And we noted that a lot of communities do that. Dr. Conti gave me his word that it would appear on a school committee meeting agenda in the near future. It wasn't on last night, but I, but I, I believe it will be coming down the pipeline. So that was good enough to earn my vote in favor. But the other five, they really want this explored. In fact, they wish it had been explored sooner before you brought the, before you brought the warrant to us. But we hope that you will, the school committee will reconsider its policy on no sponsorships for scoreboards.
Thank you, Mr. Sinessi. Mr. Kuna or Dr. Conti, any comments?
No, these fields will, scoreboards will make the fields more usable. We'll be able to have more varsity teams play at the middle school. That's two articles before you tonight, will make that field more usable. The middle school field is, is complete, other than a scoreboard and some stands, so the field won't need work. So we'd just like to make sure that it is usable for, for, again, more varsity sports. I can give you a concrete example that I just learned about. The boys' lacrosse team requires a scoreboard. Girls' lacrosse team actually doesn't really require a scoreboard, just a timer. So the girls always play at the middle school, the boys always play at varsity field, the girls want to play at varsity field. But we can't have the boys play at the middle school because there's no scoreboard. So again, it would allow us to have more flexibility and the middle school field available for more teams. Francis Wyman, the baseball field, we just need to have a more permanent solution. And again, the scoreboards will enhance that field. And then the other scoreboard would be available for, again, multi-use, for the, probably for the softball field, softball team as well, is my understanding. Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Dr. Conti. Mr. Kuna.
I just want to add, because it's come up in previous conversations, is that while we are addressing or trying to address varsity, junior varsity, and freshman sports, these do a scoreboards do have the capability of being run remotely. So we believe that we can expand into youth sports and so forth. But again, you know, our priority right now is trying to get them for, like you said, the varsity, junior varsity, and freshman sports. But we will look to address that with youth and recreation sports, access to those scoreboards.
Thank you, Mr. Kuna. Any questions on this? Ms. Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Betsy Hughes, Precinct 7. I'm in general in favor of anything to do with sports. That's my, my life and my family's life these days. But I feel like this has come prematurely. I think there needs to be some more homework done. For example, you say here it's a low priority on the sheet that you sent us today. It feels like if it's a low priority, we could probably take a few minutes and resolve the issue about sponsorships. There are companies in this town who I know would pay for the whole, all of them, for just their name at the bottom. And if you look at the high school scoreboard today, it's got the name of an insurance agency on the bottom. So I feel like this is probably something at some point we need to do, but I think you're too soon. So I would suggest that you hold off on this until you resolve that issue. See if you can get organization, another organization to pay for it and save Burlington one hundred and ten thousand dollars. Thank you.
Further questions on this? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. Excuse me, yes, sir.
Paul Schwartzman, Precinct 7. It was just mentioned that this is premature. This is actually long, long overdue. My kids play on those fields. We spend the fourth quarter guessing what the score is to kind of figure out if we're winning, if we're losing, how many goals we're down by. My daughter plays soccer there, it's the same thing. We are losing more good athletes to private schools than ever before. It's a serious problem. Improving our fields will help solve this. We should do this as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions, comments? Yes, ma'am, up at the back.
So I, I think my question would be along the lines of, if we vote to approve this, I don't think that would necessarily preclude us from getting sponsorships during the process, but is this something that we would need to do to get the ball rolling now? And then any funds that aren't used, like let's say we do get sponsorships that cover the cost of this, that money would be return of the town, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Online, Mr. Interess.
Just wanted to clarify, I see two quotes here. Excuse me, this is for Marshall Simons Middle School and Francis Wyman Fields, is that correct?
Yes, so there is, there is a priority request that have come from the Athletics Department in youth sports. Marshall Simons is our number one priority. Francis Wyman is a secondary priority. Marvin and Rotary are further down on that list, but something that we would look to consider. The two quotes that you see are for multi-use scoreboards. A multi-use has double layer and you can play multiple sports on it, as the name suggests. A single-use board really has the home, away, and the score, and then a time clock, and that's it. So a field like Francis Wyman could benefit from a multi-use board. A field like Marshall Simons could benefit from a multi-use board. But when we get to singular, let's say, baseball fields, a baseball field or a single scoreboard would benefit those fields.
Thank you, Mr. Kuna. Mr. Eiler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, John Eiler, Precinct 6. Vice Chair of Ways and Means. We did have a little discussion about the sponsorship and Ways and Means didn't vote on it, but I, at least my personal sense is that it's a very bad idea and a slippery slope. You know, I don't think we want to have this be the Amazon Town Meeting or have your kids going to algebra class sponsored by Coca-Cola. So, you know, I don't know why sports would be any different, quite frankly. So I think in general, we, you know, unless you want to go to, you know, the Microsoft Town Hall next week, I suggest we keep town things owned by the town and not sponsored by anyone.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Online, Mr. Glance.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Nolan Glance, Precinct 1. I'm in favor of this. I've used block kids for the last fifteen, twenty years going through there and it totally changes the experience. I remember when they put the scoreboards in at Simons and it definitely, it, you know, compared to other towns, almost all is intertown play and people come here and it just, it just totally, the very immature image without the scoreboards. It makes a big difference, so, and I agree with the, if we decide later to get add sponsorships, we can have them, there's nothing that precludes us from doing this now and layering that in once that gets decided, so I'm in favor, thank you.
Ms. Fristachi, online.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Joanne Fristachi, Precinct 3. I just, I just want to add to what Mrs. Hughes said and remind everyone that it was either six or seven years ago that she stood and offered to actually raise money for the schools because she is a retired corporate executive. So while I recognize that many things are long overdue, I also want to underscore the fact that we do have an insurance company's name on the field. So if, unless we're considering withdrawing that, there's no inconsistency to getting other sponsorships. And I really appreciate the town meeting member who stood up and spoke to the fact that we're losing students to private schools because of sports, because that is a, an issue I alluded to earlier about the declining enrollment in high school. And I think it would be terrific to have exit interviews at the end of middle school to find out if that is indeed true and then that would have implications for town spending. But I would want to withhold voting on this until we settle the issue of sponsorships and funding. Thank you.
On line, excuse me, Ms. O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Trisha O'Brien, Precinct 2. I also want to echo the idea that we should explore sponsorship. If we've already have the precedent and every major arena you go to in the country has sponsorships, and I don't frequent a lot of intertown things, but I imagine many communities also have that. But really more, my point is the question as to whether or not there are solar-powered scoreboards on the market these days. And if there are, would they be able to be positioned in a way that we could avoid having to do the electrical work that way and have battery and solar-powered scoreboards? Thank you.
Mr., was there a question there? I'm sorry, I was, was there a question to be answered? Sorry, Pat. About solar? Okay. Mr. Kuna.
I'm not aware of specific solar-powered scoreboards themselves. I believe you could make anything solar-powered with enough solar panels and battery storage, if that was something that we were interested. But I'm not aware, like I said, of a standalone solar-powered scoreboard.
Thank you. Mr. Wood, did I see your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mark Woods, Precinct 7. I'm in favor of getting sponsorships for the scoreboard. Unless you haven't driven around any local college or if you watch sports on television, virtually every sporting event is sponsored by some corporate sponsor. It's done very tastefully. I, I think this is one opportunity where the town could, probably has people who are very willing to pay for this, to put a modest sign up in order to sponsor these scoreboards. And I think this is an opportunity for the town to show the taxpayers that we are taking this seriously and we're doing everything we can to mitigate spending money we don't have to spend. Thank you.
Mr. Campbell.
Chris Campbell, Precinct 1. I'm also on Town Meeting and the School Subcommittee. Originally abstained from voting on this when the idea of sponsorship come up because I too had that idea. But one of the things that I took in consideration was we are not just talking about the high school fields, we're talking about middle school fields. And with middle school, because of the different amount of age and different type of advertising to that age group. And so when considering warrant articles and that this meets the criteria for the warrant articles and the schools identifying this was a need in the actual meeting itself, I actually voted in favor of this because I believe that as it is stands, it was, one, create equity for our varsity JV sports across the town that don't currently have that. And, two, we can go forward with this without sponsorship because I think then we have to decide, one, what to, what will get sponsorship over another, which I think would be a very competitive and very big issue. But, two, the amount of corporations within our town are already stretched thin with the very different amount of places that they're already currently giving. So that's why I ultimately voted in favor of this.
Ms. Bix Island. Online.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So I guess I want to echo a few different things I've been hearing other Town Meeting members address. I would like to see these, this middle school and the high school get the scoreboards that they are asking for. And I do think there is an equity issue that, at play here as addressed by Mr. Campbell. However, I think I would be more comfortable with this vote being postponed because the sponsorship issue is not clear to me. There's obviously a difference of opinion among members, some who feel very strongly that corporate sponsorship is just fine since it's common practice at, in other, in other places, including at the national level. But myself, I do not want to see corporate sponsorship on middle school scoreboards in particular, but also on scoreboards at the high school. I would like to avoid that. And I have heard in school committee meetings this issue come up and it seemed to me that largely there was consensus among the school committee in opposition of corporate sponsorship on these scoreboards. School committee compositions change regularly. Maybe not so much in Burlington, but certainly we're moving in that direction. So the current school committee is opposed to sponsorship. Who's to say how long that position will be held? And how much influence does the school committee have in determining this issue and being a deciding factor for this issue? I'd like to, if anybody can speak to that. And lastly, I also want to throw my support for exploring solar-powered scoreboards. I think anything we can do as a town to be mindful of environmental impact and impact on wildlife is a very positive position to take and good role modeling for our students. So I'll end with that, thank you.
Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hopefully, I'm answering this correctly, is that on a school property, if the school committee directed me to not have sponsors, then I would be smart not to have sponsors. And the funding for that would come through this body. So if this body wanted sponsors, their way of moving that would be not to support the funding of the project. So I, I think that's how it would work, looking at Town Council, so. So, so again, I would be, I am, supporting the warrant as supported by the school committee, which does not support sponsorship, and seeing this as a priority. And then it's up to this body to fund or to not fund the warrant article.
Ms. Damiani.
Let's try, is it on? Okay. Lucy Damiani, Precinct 3, thank you. As a former school community member, my recollection is that our school committees have not approved of corporate sponsorship of buildings or rooms on school committee property. And I believe brush field was primarily named because of the recipients longstanding. And I believe brush field was primarily named because of the recipients' longstanding participation in school sports. However, I am opposed to corporate sponsorship or to soliciting it for this purpose. And I do have a question. Does this article fund, is the intention of this article to fund scoreboards for one school or for two, or is this to see how far the $110,000 will go?
Mr. Kuna, please.
The intent, if everything goes well and funded by you all tonight, would be to purchase three scoreboards.
Thank you, Bob. Well, we've discussed sponsorships to a very high level. Does anyone have anything new to bring up? Mr. Sinessi, you've already spoken once. Do you have something new to say?
Budget member. Yes, Adam Sinessi, Precinct 1, has something new. So is there an athletic revolving account that might have $110,000 in it that we could, if we do vote against this tonight? Because my votes actually going the other way at this point, is that I would be more inclined to take this out of a revolving fund if the recommendation is that the school committee hasn't endorsed a policy towards sponsorship. If the school committee, if there's, if people are defined and that it's always been this way and that's how it's going to continue to be, I'm going to be inclined to recommend that this comes out of a revolving account. And I'm just wondering if there is a revolving account with this type of money in it.
Dr. Conti.
Mr. Moderator, there is an athletic revolving account. Most of those funds are already, the expenditure of those funds are already identified to run the sports program. I don't believe there would be the amount to fund this warrant article all at once. We might be able to do pieces of it over several years, but I don't think we could take the full warrant article and pay for this complete warrant.
Again, does anyone have anything new to add to this discussion? Mr. Fraxick, online.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Jim Fraxick, Precinct 6. I'd just like to say that I think this is premature to consider, especially considering that we earlier tonight voted on a master plan for all the athletic fields. In the backup for the master plan, it says we'll perform, we'll evaluate site equipment infrastructure such as fencing, lighting, irrigation, dugouts, scoreboards, backstops, spectator seating, and related facilities from a serviceability and safety perspective. So I think, you know, for me, as of today, it's a no, you know, I'd rather we have a comprehensive plan than, you know, piecemeal this and not get, you know, what we want or deserve, you know, for the money that we're spending. Thank you.
Is there anything further? Mr. Fraxick, if you could put your hand down. Seeing nothing more, we'll put this to a vote. Hold on, Amy. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. I think we should have a count on this one. Mr. Giannino, if you could give us a hand, and Mr. Nizio. I hope our financial wizards can handle this. So all those in favor, please stand. All those opposed, please stand. There being 55 people in favor, 37 opposed. This motion passes. The next held article, Article 721, Activity Bus and Utility Vehicles for the Schools, Ways and Means voted 12-0-0 in favor. Capital Budget voted 2 in favor, 4 opposed. Mr. Riggs, please.
Thank you very much. Ways and Means introduces this article for, to purchase two 14-passenger vans and two Gator utility vehicles. The passenger vans will be used for travel to athletic events for the smaller sports that typically don't necessarily need a full, you know, bus. The drivers will be school, approved school staff and be added to the town's insurance policy just to make sure that things are done properly. The two Gators will be used on school premises to ferry equipment and staff around the campuses, getting things to and from, for example, the high school to the varsity field can tax individuals. Back on the vans, a lot of, many times, for expedience, the coaches or the students will end up driving themselves to smaller events, and that's not the best way to go about it. Ways and Means voted unanimously in favor of these purchases.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. Mr. Sinessi.
Capital Budget voted 2 in favor, 4 against. It boils down to, there was concern over a liability issue. It sounds like Ways and Means vetted that further than we did. But the other concern was this didn't appear into, in a, I didn't see this in a plan or a 10-year plan until FY '26. So I'm assuming that any vehicles we had in 2020 didn't get a lot of usage, and now we're moving this up three years. It just didn't add up for us.
Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll speak to the 14-passenger vans, and Mr. Kuna will speak to the utility vehicles. We had some of our athletic teams in the last couple of years, they have to wait, because we use the same buses to drive kids home, they have to wait for their buses to come to transport them. And some of the smaller teams, cross-country, golf, swimming, if we could get them to their events using, fit the whole team on a van, get them to their events, we wouldn't have to wait for the bus, and that causes backups as we go through. If we wait for one, then they just get constantly delayed. More importantly to me is during the school day, we're seeing more and more programming where some of our students are working in the community, some of our life skills program, our kids need to be transported to different work sites. We're doing more and more of that programming. We've been borrowing some vans or asking for vans from the Lab Collaborative, who is also part of Burlington. So we need these vans for both our in-school programming, again, most important to me, and I would really help to speed up and make more efficient some of our smaller teams as they travel. Many districts are starting to utilize these vehicles. These are not replacing anything, that's why they're not in the capital plan. These would be two new vehicles available to the school district, again, for student transportation during the day and for after school. And now for the utility vehicles.
Mr. Kuna.
Thank you. For the utility vehicles, as you can see from the campus here alone, just at the high school, to get equipment from the high school itself, whether it's the gym area or the music area out to, whether it's the band practice field, whether it's our sports practice field, or whether it's varsity field itself, just moving equipment becomes taxing in and out every single night. We do have one Gator right now, which was purchased when we installed varsity field 12 years ago. That one, we're looking to take out of life cycle and then replace with one and add a second one onto it. We do maintain both of the turf fields in conjunction with rec department as well, too. So we do have attachments and equipment that we can use for those fields. But like I said, these would definitely help us getting back and forth throughout the campus. These would be housed in the maintenance department and then serviced as well with the maintenance and highway department, as is our current utility vehicle.
Thank you, Mr. Kuna. Questions on this? Mr. Sinessi, you already spoke.
Adam Sinessi, Precinct 1. So I have a question. So right here, I have the, I have the town's budget for FY '23, and I don't actually see a line item for this in the FY '23 budget. The next time I see funding related to vehicles for the schools is in FY '26. Does that mean, does this replace that funding that's coming down the line in FY '26? Or is that still planned?
Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think that money is still planned, because we do have two other vans that we utilize for inter-building transportation. And then there's a van that is attached to the maintenance department for moving larger equipment and for doing work at all six school locations. So I believe that funding is for when those vans come offline. Again, the passenger vans that we're talking about are new, they're not replacing them. We're seeing program expansion for our students who need to be transported during the day. We don't want teachers to do that in their own personal cars. And we could also get our smaller sports teams to practices and to games more efficiently at the end of the day. So I believe that would stay in, Mr. Sinessi.
Ms. Saltman.
Is this on? Okay. Myrnus Saltman, Precinct 2. As part of the Transportation Committee, we looked at every kind of transportation that this town has. And one of the things we discovered was there's no after-school transportation for the kids if they want to go work at a job, if they want to go to the library, if they want to do a pickup game somewhere in town. It's always, you know, parents have to get them there. So my question is, would these vans be used for those possibilities?
Dr. Conti.
To the moderator, probably not. Again, I think if there was a school-related event or a team going with a school employee, probably. I think we do have parents who are also coaches, so is it possible a parent drives? Absolutely. But do I think this would be for students wanting to get, a group of students wanting to get to Simon's Park sort of on their own? Probably not. I'm just imagining if there would be a scenario. We would try to be as flexible, obviously, as we can, but these are for school-related programs, again, during the day for school employees to drive, and for school-related programs after school for school employees to drive.
Thank you for your answer, but I would urge the attendees here tonight and at home to really consider the need for transportation for kids after school. And so in a way, this is almost discriminatory, that if you're on a team, you're going to get a ride that we're going to pay for. But if you want to work at the mall, or do volunteer work, or go to the library, you either have to have your parents take you, if they're around, or you don't get there. So think about that. Thank you.
Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just wanted to clarify, we do have late buses, and I think we have three at the middle school and two at the high school that do make abbreviated runs around town. So there, if students want to stay after school, there are opportunities for them to do that. They may not get dropped off at their exact spot that they would get on their normal run home, but we get them close as we can. So we do have late buses after school. These vans might actually increase the number of late buses we could have, because those buses aren't transporting sports teams. So again, we use the same buses for everything. So if we're transporting a team and not using a full bus, then maybe that bus would be available for another late run. So, Ms. Saltman, we may be able to expand some of that by having smaller vans available to transport our students.
I see the buses at the middle school and the Marshall School every day, and I see the parent cars lined up, and they're endless. And this town has been very generous to our school students. We pay for the transportation, and yet all these parents and other adults are picking the kids up to and from the school. I think this is a source of spending that we should not do. Thank you.
Online, Ms. O'Brien.
Patricia O'Brien, Precinct 2. I want to echo what town member, town meeting member Saltman has expressed concern about, and that is the availability of transportation that is equitable to people. And I would urge the school committee to consider formalizing some stops on the late buses that would bring people to popular work or volunteer civic engagement locations. So again, I think the Transportation Committee did significant work on that. In addition, the idea of sharing, you mentioned that you borrowed vans from the lab. I continue to encourage the town to think about collaboration as opposed to just new expenditures. Having said that, I have significant liability concerns about this program, and of course, my sustainability hat, there is a green community requirement. I believe that these are electric vehicles or hybrid, and so that's a question.
Mr. Kuna, please.
Similar to previous statements I've made, the estimates that you have in front of us are, again, estimates. There's some shortages right now in regards to transportation and vans in particular. So when we, or if we are funded by this body tonight, then we will have to put our orders in. So I have considered and looked at the pricing of hybrid vehicles, electric vehicles, but the pricing in front of you is gas vehicles. Dodge in particular and Mercedes believe to have a shorter wait time as far as getting gasoline equipment as opposed to electric equipment. So again, it's an option that we're looking at, but it's not defined yet.
Mr. Wood, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mark Woods, Precinct 7. They're labeled as activity buses. And many years ago, I drove a minibus for a school system, and I was required to get a public service license. Are the teachers or whoever is assigned to drive these vehicles going to be required to have that type of license, and if so, who has to pay for it?
Mr. Kuna.
The investigations that we have come to do not require the driver to have any CDL license, so a 14-passenger van falls under that limit. And since it's not transporting kids to and from school as a primary source, then we would not be required to have a CDL license for the drivers.
Online, Ms. Bix Island.
Ms. Bix Island, Precinct 1. So it's interesting, as I'm listening to this discussion, I'm hearing folks who do care about equal access for all kids, always concerned about this amendment being passed. I entered into this discussion in favor of this, but I do want to... I entered into this discussion in favor of this, but I do want to reiterate or, you know, add to the voices out there talking about the lack of equitable transportation for any of our students. And my husband coaches girls soccer here in town, and we know of a family that pays Uber every single time their child participates in soccer because the parents do not have a vehicle. And we have helped out when we can, but we're working. It's complicated, and it gets particularly complicated when there are out-of-town games. And this family is not alone in this challenge. We know of families that opt out of participation in soccer and other sports because the parents are working, and the middle school and high school-aged kids do not have a way to get to either practice or games. So, you know, this particular amendment cannot address all the different layers of equity challenges our community faces, but I'm wondering, as Ms. Saltman was asking before, could the van or one of these vehicles be scheduled for use by families requesting support with transportation? Or does that just raise too many liability issues and create logistical problems? I guess I'm just putting this kind of a scenario out there so other town meeting members can be aware that we have young people in our community who are not participating in sports even though they very much want to because they just don't have the transportation. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I don't know the answer to that question, so I'm willing to explore it. But these would be, again, school-owned vans for school programming and for school personnel to drive. Again, our schools aren't museums, our vans aren't collector's items. I'd want them, if used properly, worn out. And if there's a way we could do it, I would be open to that as long as it didn't conflict with, again, the main purpose of school programming and during the day and school programming in the evenings. Weekend use, again, Mr. Moderator, I'll explore it, I don't know the answer.
Thank you for exploring it. Mr. Pearson, online.
I'd like to speak in favor of this specific amendment, and I think that a lot of the other concerns that have come up are actually non-school activities that kids need transportation to. And I think that that speaks to the issue of, we discontinued the B-line a number of years ago so that there is no after-school buses anywhere for kids. And maybe the Transportation Committee and stuff should look at. I think that there's a van service, call-in van service now for seniors. Maybe that service ought to be expanded to all residents of town. But I don't think we should start having the school system run a bus service just randomly around the town. I think they should be focused on doing just school things.
Online.
Me, Mr. Moderator. I'm having trouble hearing, so I don't know if you've called on me, Mr. Moderator. All right, if you can hear me, Nikki Cadillac, Precinct Six. I just, I am in favor of this. I also just wanted to advocate for looking into electric vehicles. I know that Mr. Kuna had said that there's a longer wait time for electric vehicles, but I think a longer wait time in the short term can benefit us as a whole community and as a planet in the long term. So I just wanted to advocate for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dave Webb, Precinct Seven. So Mr. Conti talked a little bit before about the vans and how they would work with the present use of buses. Is there any savings here where we wouldn't need as many bus runs as we now do if we had these vans? And that's one question. The other follow-up comment is, I agree with the previous speaker. I think I, as a town meeting member, would even be willing to put more money into these vehicle issues, and this is a general townwide thing, if they can be purchased as hybrid or electric vehicles in general.
Thank you. Yes, sir, over here. Did you ask a, I'm sorry, was there a question there?
I'll answer it.
I thought there was a comment.
Paul Schwartzman, Precinct Seven.
Hold on, please, hold on. Go ahead. Juggling a couple balls up here, I guess I dropped one.
Initially, we're not projecting a strong savings. That's something that we'll have to see. So after-school buses, athletic buses, and field trip buses are optional in the contract as far as the quantity. So it's something that we project, but not necessarily commit to. I mean, we have 180 days of school, so 18 buses do run 180 days. So that is a little bit more fixed and predictable. So depending on whether or not we offset the number of bus runs that we use after school, you know, with the vans, you know, it's definitely a conversation that we can readdress.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Paul Schwartzman, Precinct Seven. There will be a savings. I know Bob can't project it, but there definitely will be. I coach the wrestling team here, so on a Saturday, I take 10, 12, five kids an hour away on a bus. The bus either sits there for 15 hours or it comes back to get us. If I can hop in a van and drive the team, that'll cost me a tank of gas, significantly cheaper than a bus driving two ways for 15 hours or whatever.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Willard, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sally Willard, Precinct Four. Someone raised the question of the license type of the drivers, and my question has to do with the liability to the town or the schools or to the drivers. Should something, should there be an accident? So if you could address that, I know that there are certain requirements that you can have for larger vehicles, but I'd just like to know something about the liability should an accident occur. Thank you.
Dr. Conti.
Mr. Moderator, I'm not sure of the exact liability. I know that we have teachers and coaches driving students in their own cars now, and I think this would be safer than the current arrangement that we have. It is a school program, they would be under the umbrella of the school's insurance policy, which is under the umbrella of the insurance of the town. So I don't exactly know how the liability would work in terms of what the accident is or who would be at fault. I don't know that.
Ms. Willard, follow-up?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I wonder if someone in the town administration might be able to answer that about the liability? If we have, or town council, if we have town-owned vehicles that are being driven by teachers or parents? I'm just wondering. Thank you.
Through the moderator, Lisa Mead, Town Council. Certainly any of this would have to be approved by the insurance company, but I suspect that the insurance company will require the appropriate licensure. And certainly, in town-owned maintained vehicles would be better for the town than personal vehicles.
Yes, sir, in the middle.
Kevin Clusey, Precinct Two. Motion to move.
The question has been moved. It's been seconded. It's not debatable. All those in favor of moving the question? Okay, all those opposed? There being an easy two-thirds majority in favor of moving the question, we will now move on to the vote on the article. There a poll out, Amy? Did I ask for those opposed? I did, didn't I?
No, you didn't ask for anybody, yeah.
Okay, I didn't ask for a vote? Man, it's been a long night already. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. Yes, I asked people to vote on moving the question. I'll get this moderator job down one of these days. To be in a clear majority in favor, this motion passes. The next held article, 7-22, bleachers for the Marshall Simon's Middle School field, $220,000. Ways and Means voted 12-0-0. Capital Budget voted 1 in favor, 5 opposed. School Committee voted 5-0-0 in favor. Mr. Riggs, please.
Roger Riggs, Ways and Means. Discussed this with the school committee and it's for Ways and Means to provide a set of bleachers for 300 or 400 people on the Marshall Simon's Middle School turf field. Logic in the explanation is very similar to the previous discussion about the scoreboards in terms of completing another set of a field that's equally useful and usable as varsity field. The $220,000 is proposed by a set of features that will be fully accessible and to place them on one side of the field at Marshall Simon's. Ways and Means, some committee voted unanimously to support.
Mr. Sinessi, please. Capital Budget.
Capital Budget voted 1 in favor, 5 against. I believe, you know, what it boiled down to is, I don't believe we've seen this in a plan prior to this year. It's never appeared in a 10-year plan before. I think when it comes into a spend of this size, that, again, I understand the need. I was the one vote in favor. I live it, so I get it. But I would assume the rest of the committee sort of has the spirit that, you know, do the master plan first, that they were against. And then when you're done doing that, that's the time to build this into a plan and hopefully plan forward accordingly from there.
Thank you, Mr. Sinessi. Any school department wish to make comments? Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, this is connected to the scoreboard conversation we had. The Marshall Simon's field is complete, other than for a scoreboard and stands, so we're not going to be doing anything to the field. This would make Marshall Simon's usable for varsity teams. Also, I think it would help preserve the track in the field because there are lots of chairs and benches being dragged across the track and used in the field. So this would create, I think, a safer, more permanent, even though they're portable, they're very heavy, no one's going to be moving them, stands for people to watch high school sporting events, community sporting events, and youth sporting events. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Conti. Any questions from the body on this article? Ms. Byer.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kathy Byer, Precinct Two. This is going to be the ninth out of 10 articles that were held. This is going to be my ninth vote of yes, but what, I want to express frustration that out of the school items on this list, that unlike other things that came in front of the capital budget, that explained what the situation was and what the benefit was going to be of spending this money and what would happen if it wasn't spent now. All we have from the school are estimates. Out of context, we had to wait till tonight to hear from Ways and Means what the context is. And I would appreciate it if you would come up with some sort of a form that would inform town meeting members when we get our backups about what this expense is, what it's going to do, and why it's important to do it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byer. Any further questions on this article? Yes. Betsy, go ahead. Ms. Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Betsy Hughes, Precinct Seven. At the risk of sounding like a broken record, we just spent $70,000 on a study. The study is definitely looking at things like bleachers and other facilities. This is $220,000 we're talking about. Why can't we wait until the study's done, see what the other priorities are, so we can spend this money more responsibly? We're going to have to decide, we're going to be spending money, but let's make sure we're spending it on the right things at the right time. So I would encourage you to think about this and to vote no.
Online, Mr. Pearson.
Your moderator, Monty Pearson, Precinct Three. I agree that we should follow the master plan, but this particular item, I think, is something that is easy to understand, the need for it. And I think that if we have, wait until our study is done, it's going to tell us that we should buy new bleachers and spend $275,000 or $300,000 because prices have gone up. I think that if there's something that we want to have now, it makes more sense to buy it now than two years from now.
Mr. Pearson. Mr. Murphy, online.
Moderator, Chris Murphy, Precinct Five. Basically, I was going to just say the same thing Monty said. So honestly, all the complaining that goes on, not to be a stick in the mud here, but it's been many years that I've heard people complain that we don't have enough information or we don't get it in time or whatever. There are certain things that are just obvious. You build a brand-new field that we spent a ton of money on, and it's beautiful, and I don't know how many years it's been since the field's been there with nowhere to sit for people going to games. It's ridiculous. It's obvious that that field needs bleachers. And it's, to me, it's absolutely ridiculous to complain to the schools or whatever that we didn't get enough information or wasn't in the 10-year plan. This is an obvious thing that we need to do. Yes, it's expensive. Everything is. But it makes no sense to me that we wouldn't complete this project, which is not complete. But it makes no sense to me that we wouldn't complete this project, which is not complete, until we have stands down there. Pretty silly. Thank you.
Further online, Ms. Maniscalco.
I'm Maniscalco, Precinct 4. As a parent of children who are constantly playing on these fields, it's really obvious that our fields need to be completed. There's always competition. Who's going to have this field? Who's going to have that field? The girls lacrosse can play on this one, they can't play on that one. Let's complete the fields. Let's make sure that they have good stands. Let's make sure that our town is a good place for children to play. If you've gone to Bill Rica lately, they just redid their high school and all their fields. It is gorgeous. I mean, they have so many fields around that high school, brand-new scoreboard, brand-new stands. It's amazing. And, you know, I'm not one to say, you know, we have to keep up with the Joneses, but like, I think our children deserve a good place to play and, you know, the right facilities. We now have a turf field, we can have a nice scoreboard, we can have nice things for the children. And even though my kids probably won't even use it that much, I think it's important, going forward, to make sure that we're taking care of the things that the children are using and encouraging them to play sports. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Rustachi, online.
We have Rustachi, Precinct 3. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just guess I just want to, in summary, say, there have been a lot, a lot, a lot of questions, obviously, many more than I've ever seen. But this is also $1.8 million in warrant articles. So, you know, to Mr. Murphy's point, you know, I'm not, I don't, I think we all believe that children should, yes, have the best that we can give them of everything, but I just have found this to be somewhat disappointing tonight, that, given how many times it's been raised that these things weren't in plans, that we have $1.8 million in warrant articles tonight. And that's all. Thank you.
Anything further? Seeing nothing, let's put this to a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. There being a clear majority in favor, this article passes. Let's move on to the next held article. For the schools, visitor control access system, $25,000. Ways and Means supported this 12-0-0. Capital Budget voted 3 in favor, 2 opposed, 1 abstention. School Committee supported this 5-0. Mr. Riggs, please.
The Ways and Means Committee voted to support this article. The plan is, is to, the $25,000 is for a three-year period to install kiosks in the entryways of each of the schools that will help get visitors in and out of the building. The kiosks will scan, for example, scan a driver's license, take a picture of the person, and print a badge that, with the picture and the name, and that the person would wear this badge while they're in the school. It helps track people who are, visitors who come into the school. It makes it easier to know who's been, who's come, and doing tracking. I think it'll be a big help, probably a little bit of a labor saver, so that individual staff doesn't have to do the work, but it should be a big improvement over the current manual system. Ways and Means supported it unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. Mr. Sinessi, please.
Budget is not as stingy as everyone thinks. Capital Budget did vote, contrary to what was said earlier. Capital Budget voted 5 to 1 in favor of this, for all of the reasons that Ways and Means quoted, so it would just be redundancy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sinessi. Any questions on this article? Oh my God, seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? There being one person voting against this, the article passes. It's only 10:30. We've got a long ways to go. At this rate, we're going to be here for five nights. All right, there is a motion to adjourn on the floor. You have a poll for that, please? Okay, poll going out. All those in favor of adjourning? All those opposed? Thank you. There being a clear majority against adjourning, the meeting will continue. Let's move on to Article 8. It's been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to see if the town will vote to accept any and all grants, including but not limited to $1,090,837 relative to the Chapter 90 allocation from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for the purpose of funding roadway improvements, same to be spent under the direction of the town administrator. Ways and Means voted to accept money unanimously, as did the Selectment. Any questions on this? Okay, all those in favor of accepting money? All those opposed? Accepting money passes. Article 9, MWRA-I&amp;I debt service. To see if the town will vote to transfer from the sewer inflow/infiltration fund money to pay our debt service to the MWRA. If the motion is as printed in the warrant. It's for $77,975. Ways and Means voted 12-0-0. Select Board voted 5-0-0 in favor of it. Mr. Riggs, oh no, this will be Mr. Eiler, please, for Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is money that's collected with new connections. When new connections are made, it goes into a receipt fund, and this is just transferring money from that fund to pay off the loans from the MWRA. So we recommended unanimously to do this transfer.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Are there any questions or comments on this article? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of Article 9? All those opposed? There being a clear majority in favor, this motion passes. Article 10, Sewer Enterprise Fund. It's been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to see if the town will vote to authorize the sum of $6,271,100 to operate the FY 2023 Sewer Services Enterprise, including sewer assessment, maintenance, and debt services, of which $5,970,000 will come from the FY 2023 Sewer Services Enterprise estimated revenue account, and $301,100 will come from the Sewer Services Enterprise Fund retained earnings account. Okay. Ways and Means, Mr. Eiler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is money that's collected as part of your sewer bill. The first part is just the estimated revenue for FY 23 coming up. The second part, that was mentioned, $301,000, is basically carryover from the previous year's collection. So this is just transferring money from those receipt accounts to allow it to be used for the actual operation of the sewer system. Ways and Means voted unanimously to support this.
Are there any questions from the body? Comments from the body? Ms. O'Brien, online.
What will the balance be, then, in the retained earnings for the sewer enterprise? And then, would this be, would we be able to use ARPA funds to fund this if we think that we don't have a recovery timeframe?
Radio, please. Radio, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We estimate that the sewer retained earnings after this motion will be $2,091,000.
And can we use ARPA funds for it?
This is an operating expense, so I do not believe that it would be an appropriate use of ARPA funds to, this is basically a bill from the MWRA that we're funding with these revenues.
Thank you. Any further questions? In that case, let's put this to a vote. And Pat, could you, there we go, take your hand down. Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? There being a clear majority in favor, Article 10 passes. Article 11, Water Stabilization Fund. This article is as printed in the warrant. It is to see if the town will vote to transfer from the Water Stabilization Fund the sum of $952,243 to cover operating expenses for the, our connection to the MWRA. Mr. Eiler.
Moderator. When the town decided to do the connection to the MWRA, obviously, we knew that was a big expense. As part of that plan, the, there was an agreement to raise the water rates over time and use that additional money for paying for that connection. So the Water Stabilization Fund is where that money goes to, and this article is to transfer the money from that fund, for the money that's already been collected, to pay for the MWRA connection, as was our plan. So Ways and Means supported this unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Any comments or questions from the body? Seeing none, let's vote on this one. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you, this, this article passes unanimously. Article 12. FY 22 Water Usage PFAS. It is moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $500,000 to fund additional water purchases from the MWRA in FY 2022. Mr. Eiler.
Mr. Moderator. As you know, the town's water supply has PFAS that is above the new limit that the state has set. And because of that, the state has basically mandated that we turn on the Adams Street connection for a million gallons of water a day. So that was not something that we had planned on doing. And because the MWRA water is more expensive to purchase than using our own town-produced water, this is to cover that shortfall or cover that extra expense that we had not planned on. So Ways and Means has voted unanimously to support this article.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, just to be clear, this is for FY 22. This is to cover a shortfall from the current year, ending this June.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Any questions from the body on this one? Seeing none, let's vote on it. All those in favor? Opposed? There being a clear majority in favor, this motion, this article passes. Article 13. Road and Parking Paving, A Bond Issue. The motion has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to see if the town will appropriate $3,500,000 to be expended under the direction of the town administrator to pay costs for paving, roads, parking lots, and/or sidewalks, and for to pay costs for paving, roads, parking lots, and/or sidewalks, and for the pavement of all other costs incidental and related thereto. And that, to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the sel- approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said amount under the, under and pursuant to MGL, Chapter 44, Paragraph 7, 1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of, of the town therefore. Ways and Means. Mr. Eiler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, this is a recurring article that you see every other year, uh, and has stated this to cover the cost of our, our program of keeping the roads and parking lots up to date, and includes $500,000, uh, for sidewalks also. Uh, so, Ways and Means, uh, would like to keep our infrastructure going in the right direction, so we voted unanimously to support this article.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Mr. Pearson, online. I see you have a question.
Monty Pearson, Precinct 8. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, this is Article 13, correct? Then, what you just read is different than what I have in the booklet, and so I just want to check, is there a different thing that's been submitted?
I read the motion. If it's different from what's in the booklet, what I read is correct.
Thank you.
Sometimes, articles get changed between when the warrant is published and when it gets to town meeting. Ms. Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, I just have a quick question about this. Um, there was a survey done, uh, a wa- a bit ago on sidewalks, and I'm wondering if, in, as this money is being spent, if the results of that survey is going to inform how that money is spent. Thank you.
Mr. Sagarino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, yes, Ms. Hughes, it will be.
Mr. Kelly, online.
Majority vote.
It requires a two-thirds. This is a bond issue, and it requires a two-thirds majority. Ms. Saltzman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Myrna Saltzman, Precinct 2. Does this also include school, uh, parking lots? Or is that a separate issue? And, and then I'll ask a subsequent question.
Mr. Sagarino.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, um, we've, town and school parking lots are, are handled under these every-other-year bond allotments.
So, does it also include putting lighting in the parking lots?
Uh, it does not.
It does not? That's a separate issue?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Like the school pop, it has no lights, but never mind.
Anything further? Seeing nothing? Let's put this, let's put this to a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? There being one negative vote, it's a clear two-thirds majority. This motion passes. Article 14. It's been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $1,100,000 for the purpose of repairing the Forest Main at the Partridge Lane Sewer Pumping Station, same to be spent under the direction of the town administrator. Mr. Eiler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, as the town engineer explained at the previous meeting, we have 14 pump stations through town, uh, that are, uh, getting quite old and, uh, needing repairs. Uh, and in general, you'll see it, you've seen articles over the past few years, and we'll continue to see ones where, uh, one station will have an engineering, uh, work done on it, and another station will then have the actual work done on it. Uh, so, this is the pump station that's having the actual work done on it now. Uh, and we want to keep things moving along, so Ways and Means voted unanimously to support this.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Questions from the body? Comments? Seeing none, let's vote. All those in favor? Opposed? There being a clear majority, this motion passes. Article 15. PEG Cable Access Enterprise Fund. This motion is as, or this article is as presented in the, the warrant, been moved and seconded by Ways and Means, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $585,000 to operate the FY 2023 PEG Cable Access Enterprise. Mr. Eiler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, so, as part of your cable bill, you'll see a small fee each month for the PEG, uh, fee, which is the education and government and public programming. Uh, so, as you know, BCAT runs our local cables, uh, or, local access, uh, cable program. Uh, and the way that's funded is through that small surcharge on your cable bill. Uh, so, that, that surcharge goes into the Cable Access Enterprise Fund for, the receipt, uh, fund, and this is to allow us to transfer that money over to BCAT to fund them for their operations for the coming year. Uh, Ways and Means supported this unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Eiler. Any questions from the body? Comments? Hold, please? All those in favor? Opposed? There being a clear majority, Article 15 passes. Article 16 has been withdrawn. Article 17 has been withdrawn. Article 18 has been withdrawn, or 19. Oh, wait, wait, I'm missing one here. Oh, there you go. Yes, 18 has been withdrawn, 19 has been withdrawn. 20 has been withdrawn. No, 20 is, is not? There's, excuse me? Uh, no, so before we adjourn, we need to set a date and time for our next meeting. It will be next Monday, the 16th, and we will meet at 7:30. Now I have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Opposed? Since there's more yes votes here than there are people online, we're done.